1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099
[676.38]
Okay, the time being seven o'clock.
Hold on, she didn't turn on yet.
Still so shortly.
Said okay.
So shortly.
Are we gonna be on YouTube? Nice.
Oh, yeah. It flickered. Almost. There you go.
Okay. Time being seven o'clock, we'll open the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. At seven o'clock, we have a continued hearing of the matter on 227 Coacassett Street. And at 7:10, we'll be considering and voted on amendments to the rules and regulations, as well as some other matters that the chairman has. I'm David Brown, I'm the vice chairman. I'm just starting the meeting as I was chairing the case that we have. So, at seven o'clock, we had scheduled a continued hearing on administrative appeal of Maurice and Sharon Bodier pursuant to Section 10.2.2.1 of the Code of Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275. Zoning alleging that the town building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer had not enforced the Board of Appeals' Decision 0319 in certain conditions imposed by the planning board and site plan approval special permit and finding of May 19, 2005 with respect to property situated at 227 Coacassett Street in the R-40 Residential and Agricultural District. So, we heard this matter last month, and since that time, we did a sit walk, but because of scheduling conflicts and issues, it was agreed that we would just open and continue this to October 7. So, I would entertain a motion to continue this till October 7.
Second?
Well, we need somebody to make the motion.
Move to continue the hearing to October 7.
Is it second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
That's at 8:00 p.m.
And that's the one that starts at 8:00 p.m.
And that's right. And I'll make note that this continued hearing starts at 8:00 that night. Apparently, at 7:00, there's a training session that's gonna involve a lot of people. So, it may look full when you first get here. Hopefully not. Okay, so I will, and I guess the next matter is, we can take up the minutes from our hearing last month. What's the date on that?
August 19.
August 19, hearing. And I reviewed them, I don't have any issues with them.
Motion to approve minutes from August 19.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, three in favor, none opposed?
Five in favor.
Five in favor, that's right. This is because we have extra, more people here this month. Five in favor, none opposed, the minutes are approved. So, I will now turn the remainder of the meeting over to Ronnie Overitt.
So, the discussion on rules and regs is scheduled for 7:10, so we've got a few more minutes before then. So, let me just bring the board up to date on a couple of matters. First, as I sort of indicated a few minutes ago in talking with Lorraine and Kim, Paige Duncan and I have met with the advisory committee to discuss the several zoning articles that are on the warrant, those zoning bylaw revisions that are on the warrant for the special town meeting in November, and also the revisions to the signed bylaw that I've prepared and that Lorraine talked about last month. The meetings seem to go favorably, and I think we'll get the AdCom's approval. But again, that's November 15. The first six items on the warrant are zoning bylaw revisions. I think seven, eight, and nine are road approvals, and then Article 10 would be the signed bylaw revisions. I think there are 17 articles altogether on the warrant, but the first 10 would be, some of the articles would affect us directly and some indirectly. Again, one of the articles that would affect us directly is the proposed definition of habitable floor area, and of course, the signed bylaw provisions. Second, as I am sure everybody knows, we've got a 40B application that's coming our way. This is being brought under the local initiative program, which, in which the applicant, which is a couple of companies that are owned by Mike Sage, has requested the, basically the partnership or the endorsement, support, whatever word you want to use, of the Board of Selectment. And after a couple of meetings, they voted four to one to support that proposal. The next obligation that Mr. Sage has is to get a project eligibility letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development. I assume that he's already started that process, I don't know for certain. Assuming that he has, I think in theory, DHCD is supposed to either approve or deny that request within 30 days. Again, if meetings are being held virtually or what have you, it may take a little bit longer. So, my best guess is that we might get that permit filed with us in December, perhaps as late as January, perhaps as early as November. But I would expect this winter, we will have the comprehensive permit application to, you know, to consider. There are a number of interesting issues, which I'll save for the time at which we first need to discuss the matter. If you source any of the Board of Selectment meetings or have read about the matter in the newspaper, you'll know that there are some residents, both neighbors and otherwise, who object to the proposals. So buckle up, we'll have an interesting, interesting time with it. The other matter is, and Diana, you'll probably need to correct me on this, the gentleman who contacted us relative to a billboard on Route 1, he initially contacted Mr. Keegan? Is that correct?
Yeah. It's someone that Bill Keegan knows, this lawyer guy. So, he talked to Bill Keegan first, and then Bill Keegan referred him to the zoning board. And so, he called up, and he's from Canton, but I don't know where the person who owns the land lives, but it's someone who owns land along 95 in Foxborough.
So, I spoke to this individual, he's an attorney in Canton. As he indicated when we spoke, he had been on the Canton Board of Selectment for, I think, a dozen years, maybe more. He has a client who owns property that, as I understood it, abuts I-95. I didn't ask, and he didn't volunteer who that particular landowner is.
He wouldn't say. I was kind of like, where on 95? Like, you know, Cloverleaf, Mechanic Street?
But the landowner is interested in the possibility of a billboard on that property. The bylaw, signed bylaw does not allow it. We're only allowed to have billboards on Route 1. And, you know, I explained that to him, he's fully aware of it. And what I suggested is, if his client is still interested in proceeding with the matter to meet with us relative to that particular matter, to discuss, you know, the various issues that would have to be done. So, Diana, you might get a call in November or December to put him on the agenda for the next month.
Ronnie, would the, if he was in such close proximity to 95, presuming that it was allowed in the first place, would the state need to be involved in that situation?
Well, state regardless, because after we approve, after anybody, after any municipality approves a billboard, before it can be constructed, the party has to get a license from the outdoor advertising board, which is a state agency. But the one question that I have is whether the, any federal agency, because we're talking about, you know, long interstate highway, whether a federal agency has to get involved. I just don't know.
That's more of the question I should have asked you.
Yeah. I don't know. I have no idea. So, you know, it's possible that he'll follow through, and it's possible, you know, he won't. And obviously, if he does, we'll talk with him about it, and then we'll, you know, need to make a decision as to whether we want to do something in the way of a signed bylaw amendment before, I think, we would proceed any further than that. I'd also want to talk with the Selectment about it. And that's it for current events that I have. If anybody else has anything? Okay, so it's...
Was it something about the German Times or something, did you say?
Yeah, why don't we, because it's 7:10, so why don't we get into the...
Okay, all right.
So, being that I'm retired and have plenty of time on my hands, I took another crack at the rules and regulations. And really, my initial intent was to modify the provisions that relate to the comprehensive permits. Number one, they needed to be upgraded or updated. Number two, there were some, I don't want to say they were incorrect references to state regulations. At the time, the prior version was prepared, the references to state regulations were correct, just those regulations changed as far as the specific numbering. So, I wanted to make, I wanted to correct that. You know, again, there were some issues that did need to be clarified and updated. And as I did it, I looked at some other provisions in the sign, in the rules and regs that I felt needed to be modified slightly, and that's been really the first seven or eight or nine items. Nothing major as far as substantive changes from where we, you know, have been. I suppose what I could have done was, instead of doing this piecemeal, do it all at once, it might have made, you know, made more sense. But, you know, if the board is in favor of this, essentially what we will have is a completely, almost a complete rewrite of the rules and regs.
My only question was about the plan of land to accompany applications. You're requiring a registered land surveyor or civil engineer?
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes the homeowners don't want to get that deep into that kind of stuff.
I mean, we have the flexibility to waive that.
Especially the ones that aren't doing outside stuff.
Yeah, we have the flexibility to waive that, so. I'd rather keep it in there, and at least people know. And if we have to waive it, or if we want to waive it, you know, we can.
And then the only other one I had was about modification of the comprehensive permit in 20 days.
I'm sorry?
The, it's on the last page, I think, the modification of the comprehensive permits within 20 days.
Mm-hmm.
Theoretically, if they come with that the day after our meeting, we would meet again for a month, which would exceed 20 days?
Yeah, I realize that. This is essentially what the state regs require, though.
All right. So, we'd have to schedule a separate meeting for that?
And as you remember, when we had one, I don't know if it was last summer, or I guess it was the summer before, relative the proposed dog park?
Yeah.
That wasn't within 20 days, but when I spoke with her, she agreed to extend the time. But essentially, this section is a reiteration of the state regs, so.
So, going back, are those, is that what you got? Going back to the situation of requiring the plans?
Mm-hmm.
Could we somewhere insert the words, maybe waived by the zoning board or...
That they're discretion.
Something, so it's...
Because a lot of people, they get the plot plan for their house, or they get the septic plan from the Board of Health or whatever, and that's what they draw on. They don't get totally redone engineered plans.
Now, we hear you're not asking them to spend additional money, you know, to hire now just to get a new surveyor, when you had, we already have one, this, survey plan from a septic that we can scale for, which actually, I gave one to Diana today for an upcoming case we're gonna have, and I was able to scale on, you know, the new Adobe system.
What would, I'm just kind of, you've got to, do you have any idea, Barry, what it would cost somebody to have, you know, a typical one-acre lot survey?
I just got a quote from Bill for my lot, which is 1.8 acres, and it was $1,750.
Yeah.
I was gonna say 15,000.
Like a one-lot of 1,000 and...
Yeah. It all depends on what you're looking for, because they can shoot it and give you a value of, this is how much it's gonna cost just to shoot it, maybe put those wooden stakes in. We've all seen it before with the little orange tags on them. Or they can put what's called stakes in the ground, granite stakes. They're there forever, way down. So, it's all about how much money you want to spend that can drive the cost up, so, yeah.
So, why don't we add the words, under Section 2.04A, after the words "shall be accompanied", why don't we add unless waived by the board?
Now, when would they ask for it to be waived? They'd have to ask for it to be waived, I guess, before they even file their act?
Right, they would, you know, file with Diana, and then we would...
Just vote on it?
Yeah, just vote on it.
And we, I assume we would take into account...
So, you'd want to vote on it at a meeting? Because that would add time to applications.
Yeah, that's the only way we could do it. You know, that's the only way the board...
Or can't we, like, open a hearing and then...
Yeah, you'd want it before you had the hearing.
Yeah, there's no way the board would be able to do anything. So, I think the only way we could do it is, again, they file with you, request it, and then...
How about as applicable or as required, and then they just inquire with maybe me?
I mean, especially if it's like those inside things, the home occupations, they're not really doing anything outside.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, and I think that's gonna be in there, that this is really for external applica, to do with the external addition.
The parties, the parties, the old one says something about a single and two-family homes, and then everybody else, so that was what, that was, you're replacing. That's how they had it divided before.
Well, that makes sense, because if it's a single-family home or something like that, then, you know, that's a pretty big expense to incur.
Well, it depends on the issue, too. You know, we certainly want it for variance.
Right, sure.
And probably for a special permit as well.
Yeah, it's about dimensions, so if we need dimensions, we have to get it somewhere. It's gotta be from, you know, like, qualified surveyor that's stamped and signed and certified these other numbers, or even like Diana says, we get those septic ones all the time, and they're not necessarily laying out, you know, dimensions from the home to the lot lines, they're meant, they're showing dimensions of overall, like your property, just all the corners. But from there, I can scale it, whereas I showed you... But from there, I can scale it, whereas I showed Diana.
And they call that a survey, and they call that...
And I can find the numbers that we need, which will save them the cost of hiring and, you know, a new survey plan, as long as it's something that's a true testament, I can use it. And I do use them regularly for people who are, that are interested in installing pools, that are installing, you know, garages, sheds, things that are totally within their right that they have, you know, say, 25-foot setback, and it's clear they have 100 feet. I'm not going to ask them for an updated survey plan, because I can easily see with the septic plan that's in our file that they're okay. That it works.
Makes sense.
I mean, the only way I can think we can do it is, you know, again, we open the hearing, and, you know, Diana, I think you'll have a good sense...
Yeah, I mean, if it's something, like, obviously, something, obviously, that's not close. I mean, if it's something like, you know, they're saying it's 10 feet from the line, and they're, I brought out my yardstick, then maybe something like that, you'd need something more accurate.
I think you're right, for home occupation, we probably wouldn't need it, but any, anytime we're getting into an issue with a special permit or variance, or even a question about it, we're definitely going to need it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, you should want, yeah, you would want.
Yeah, I mean, usually they have some kind of construction drawing if they're going to do something, so.
And those kinds of things would be recorded, the registry deeds, they'd have to be proper. They can't be, yeah. You can't take a copy from a septic plan, you'd have to have the plan, that's proposed, stamped, signed by that surveyor of design profession. Yeah, similarly, yeah.
So, that's my suggestion, just to have the unless waived by the board. One other thing, I think in the past, we've required, what, eight copies of applications?
Yep.
So what I have in here now is to require 10. And the reason I'm saying 10 is as follows, you know, one for each of us, one for Diana's file, which would be an official, that's six, one for Barry is seven, one for Bob Cutler would be eight, and two, just in case.
Everybody's trying to reduce paperwork, not create more.
Yeah, I know, I know. But what I've also put in here is that only, I think, three copies would have to bear original signatures.
Yeah, that's all he signs anyway.
Yeah.
I think I make him do four. You, me...
Just in case.
And Bob.
Bob, that's three, yeah.
So, I mean, if you'd rather have eight, I'm fine with that, too, but I just wanted to make sure that each one of us, as well as Bob Cutler had...
Yeah, I mean, and a lot of stuff, I send out electronic now, too, so...
Yeah, I think within five to 10 years, the paper stamped drawings are going to be gone.
Yeah, Massachusetts allows electronic stamp, that's why we can accept it. We couldn't for a while, we're the last state to allow it through the country. So to do away with, you know, just to be able to electronically, which I get regularly from my...
I think eight's fine, you know, if someone comes in and wants to see a copy, I usually email it to them. If they really want a hard copy, I have the big plotter upstairs, I can make copy of full-size plans, so I can print things out, so I'm fine with keeping it at eight.
And we do the same regularly, we have all those copies, you know, and I'll have stamped drawings from architects, engineers, that they'll email over to me, and there's electronic signature on it, which again, it's acceptable through, you know, national laws, so.
So Diana, wherever I have 10 here, 10 copies, make it eight.
Make it back to eight, okay.
And that's all I got, and hopefully, I won't do any more.
I think we should have a motion to shut you off on this.
Oh, in favor of that, too?
Is this your third strike, or what? On this?
No, not, well, we, the change we made last year...
You're all right, buddy.
Yeah, the change we made last year was because of the publication.
Yeah, yeah, to have them pay, pay the exact amount instead of, because we used to just collect that, you know, it was $50 for a long time, then we put it up to 100, and that wasn't even enough.
And again, we talked about this, you know, several months ago. I think we decided the fee structure is relative to other, you know, other towns, so there's no real reason to...
It works out fine. The people, you know, I tell them, right when they get it, you know, I don't get the bill till later, you'll get it whenever. Sometimes I send it with the decision if I have it, if not. There was one guy I had to chase down, he went, left the country or something, so his wife blamed it on him. But they did eventually pay it, so. If not, I mean, if they really refuse to pay it, or whatever, I do have a small budget that I can pay stuff with. It's just the month of June that would mess me up, because if I go past that, then it has to be encumbered and all that stuff, so.
Hey, when we, this is not exactly on this, but I was thinking the other day, since now the legal notices go in the Foxborough Reporter, am I correct?
Yeah, they always have.
What's left of it, right? At some point, would it be better if we just switched it over to the Sun Chronicle?
Sun Chronicle's more expensive.
But these are costs incurred by...
It is, but even putting it in the Foxborough Reporter, like, if this lady, if she's the only one, she's going to pay like $300.
All right, well, it's going to be...
Isn't it the same paper? Because sometimes the website is like the same web address.
Yeah, but the way that they charge, the price they charge per inch for the Foxborough Reporter versus the Sun Chronicle, there's a difference of like $3 or $4 an inch. And this one has to be published twice, and we have to put all this extra stuff in it about, it has to be published in some mass newspaper, state website, so we have to put language about that, that adds, you know, three or four lines, all this Zoom stuff. I don't, I try to keep it to a minimum, but...
Eventually, it's probably going to get strangled up.
Yeah, I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how...
And what do towns do when there's no local paper?
Then, well, then it would have to go to the Chronicle, because that would become the regional paper, you know.
Just getting ahead of ourselves.
Or if some of the towns around Boston don't have a region, a local regional paper, it's the Globe or the Herald. So, anybody else have any other questions or changes, or what? So, why don't we have a motion to approve it with those revisions?
I would move that we approve with the revisions discussed, the new rules or regulations. And these do not have to go to the town meeting, right? So it's just a local vote.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Thank you. Time requirements, so as long as I've been on the board, whenever we have continued a matter, we've always required the applicant to enter into an agreement with us, saying that the matter is continued from whatever, you know, tonight is to the next month. I don't think we absolutely need to do that. And the reason being, you know, typically, when we get an application, and we're going to hear that application the next month, an application for a special permit, and an application for a variance, the public hearing doesn't have to commence until 65 days after that particular filing is made with the town clerk. We obviously do it much quicker, sometimes within 30 days, sometimes, depending on when the application comes in, it could be just 20 or 25 days, you know, sometime maybe as late as, you know, 40. A special hearing, I'm sorry, a decision on a special permit has to be rendered by us within 90 days following the date of the public hearing, or the date the public hearing commenced. And a decision on a variance has to be rendered within 100 days after the filing was made with the town clerk. It's very seldom that we don't reach the decision within 90 days on a special permit or 100 days on a variance. Occasionally, you know, we are going to be required to continue something, you know, once or twice, but it's been very rare. In fact, the last time I really remember that we continued something at length was the very first decision we had on Normandy Farms back in the 90s. There might have been six hearings on that.
Yeah, that went on for months.
So, you know, as a consequence, I don't think there's, if, for example, we had a hearing tonight and decided to continue it until October, I don't think there's a necessity that we actually sign a document with the, you know, with the applicant, saying that we've agreed to continue it. Now, it may well be that Bob Cutler's going to want that, but I don't, there's no other requirement that we do, so I think the only time we really need to do something of that nature is when we're going to start to run into problems with the 90-day or the 100-day, you know, deadline. So I think what I want to do is talk with Bob about this, and see if we can come up with some other way, if he's in agreement and we're in agreement, or just continue doing what we're doing, but perhaps modify the, you know, the forms that we have an applicant, you know, sign. Perhaps you remember, it may well be that this is something that first Marie, and then Marie Crimmens, and then Bob required us to...
I don't know how it gets started, but I know we used to, well, I think it used to be, way back, we would force the thing to be done, you know, which wasn't always fair to us or to them, you know, depending on what it was. We don't, you know, we'd fabricate a crisis because of this deadline.
Yeah, we had meetings that went to pretty late in the night.
Yeah, yeah.
But then when Dave became chairman, that was when we decided no meeting should go beyond 10 o'clock.
Yeah. Nothing good gets done after 10.
So again, this is nothing that is, that has to be decided right away. You know, Diana and I talked a little bit about it, and instead, I want to talk with Bob about it, I'll probably wait till after, after town meeting, just to see what he thinks as far as handling it. But the one other issue, as far as time matters, that concerns me, and it hasn't proven to be a problem so far, and hopefully, it won't be, is that we're supposed to file a written decision with the town clerk within 14 days of the night that we make the decision. Now, routinely in years past, we would sign decisions at the next meeting, which was obviously more than 14 days. You know, I think we've been doing it more recently, you know, within that, you know, timeframe. And fortunately, we don't have, or we haven't had many evenings where we had multiple matters that we decided, so, you know, we were writing two or three decisions within that period of time. But that's the one thing that I'm concerned about, and it's the one thing that, you know, definitely, if I felt there was going to be a need to have more time, I'd want the applicant to, you know, to sign an agreement with us to that effect. Obviously, if we turn something down, an applicant's probably not going to agree, but ideally, if I felt it would be necessary to give us a little bit more time to, for me to draft, and for everybody to look at it, and then to get it signed, you know, that I would probably want an applicant to, you know, to waive that time requirement.
I wonder, I just, there's no rush on this, right? I wonder what other towns do in terms of meeting these deadlines, asking for extensions?
Well, again, these are...
Because sometimes we start asking, we find out nobody else ever even thought of it.
Other towns probably meet more than once a month.
Yeah, these, first of all, these requirements are imposed by state statute, so it has nothing to do with the zoning bylaw or anything of that nature.
I will say, that lady who was in today lives on Idlewild or something like that, so I looked up the old decisions for Idlewild from the 80s, and they do mention continuing for the next month, we had the applicant sign an extension, so they've been doing it.
So it's been, yeah.
Yeah.
Does she have a special permit for that building to be built?
Not for that. Well, I don't know about, they probably have a subdivision plan. I don't know, anybody know where Idlewild is? It's a really tiny lot.
Idlewild's not a reservoir.
Yeah.
Towards Eaton's boat.
Oh, it's up that way.
I happen to remember that, because maybe it's somebody that I knew 20 years ago, who used to know somebody.
She's on a corner lot there, she's a square box, 100 feet, all sides.
Oh, yeah, that's not the one I know, but I remember that.
Yeah, there's no, there's no ZBA application on this particular address, but there are a couple of others. Well, actually, one lady kept getting different things on that Idlewild.
It's near the water, I guarantee.
So anyhow, going back to, you know, signing something, you know, again, the time requirements are set by state statute. State statute also says that, you know, the applicant and the board can agree to an extension. And, you know, again, I first came on the board in 92, and we were always signing something, you know, when there was a continuation.
I bet Jim Whalen came up with that.
Yeah, and it may have been that, that's something that, I guess, I don't even know if Marie was the, Marie Crimmens was the town clerk then, but it may have been something that town clerk's office was requiring. That's why I said I would want to speak with Bob before I came up with any, you know, suggestions as far as us. And that's all that I have.
Take a motion?
Yep, so, next Thursday at 8?
Next Thursday at 8:00 PM, there, it's some kind of board and committee training or something. I think it starts at 6:00, so they're thinking it'll be over by 7:30. So that's why we couldn't have it until 8:00.
Is Lorraine going to that?
Yes. So, if you want to come early and learn whatever they're learning, feel free, if not...
When do we take a motion to adjourn?
Is it going to be on cable? I'm figuring out, I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
There is one thing that I would like, if we're off, one thing I would like to mention is that, we haven't done this in a couple of years, but I would like to, after the December meeting, find a place to have a drink after. I know that Conraz is open, but...
It's the light.
Are they still on? I know I'm watching there.